Welcome to our regular scheduled second city council meeting. Today is September 17th, 2013. I do call this meeting to order and we're going to start with the youth of the month. We have Greg Beeba here is going to make a presentation for Jaden Gibbons.
Greg, you want to come up? You can bring Jaden up to the little leg.
Thanks. Well, thank you everyone for having me here. It's certainly a privilege and an honor to present this certificate of recognition to and just an outstanding student at the middle school. When, by the way, the phone call I just got was from Mrs. Roggney. Her son is in cross-country and she got caught in traffic. So she wanted to be here. Mrs. Roggney is the other band director, so she wanted to express her appreciation for all of your efforts as well. When Mr. Hackett approached Mrs. Roggney and I recently about who we thought could be considered to be student of the month, this was a no-brainer. Without being asked, Jaden Gibbons approached us and asked if we needed any help with our beginning trumpet summer band lessons. And we know that if you'd, someday we'll have to have her here to play for you. We know you'd be impressed. Jaden came in this summer like a seasoned teacher. She was patient and helpful and played along on many beginning lessons. We think Jaden has a bright future and we know he'll keep up the good work. So congratulations, Jaden.
Jaden, if you would, do you want to say anything? No? As normal, we would ask our student of the month then to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So if everyone would please rise. Are you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have Sandy read the clerk's open meeting statement.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And also Sandy, would you take role?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Porczatski.
Here.
Dave Shamble.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Nine present, we have a quorum.
Okay, next is the, to vote on the consent agenda. There are a number of items on the, that you have on your agenda that we group under the consent agenda. This is where we make one motion and vote on those, all those items with one motion. If there's any items that council members would like to see moved from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, this would be the time to let us know. If not, we'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve that consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Lockwood, second by Hackett, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Regular agenda, Sandy, you have some items?
Under number six consent agenda, letter E, item number six, the minutes from the Wapaka Regional Recycling District meeting on September 12th, 2013 were distributed. And under number eight, action items, number three, recommendation on award of construction contracts for South Park project was distributed. That's it.
Anything else, council members? We're okay with it? All right, again, we need a motion then to approve the regular agenda.
Move to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Shamble, that we approve the regular agenda with those two additional handouts. Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, under non-agenda items and announcements, we have the introduction of Emily Krug, our new teen librarian. Peg?
I'm just really pleased to introduce you to Emily Krug. She has a new name coming in a couple of weeks, so we'll have to remember Heideman after two weeks or so. So she's got a new name coming and she is just really doing a bang-up job for us with our teens. We're very pleased to have her on our professional staff.
Okay, thanks. Next, we had a letter from Terry Hocking from the Cherokee to Oshkosh. This had to do with the fly-in that they had at the Wapaka Airport and it's in your packet, it's just for informational purposes only. One thing that, under the public input, our public works director, as we all know, we had a little event before the council meeting started tonight, won a award. And we have an individual here, Mr. Jeff Mazanik, that would like to present that award to him. So Jeff, if you would, just step up to the podium for us.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Jeff Mazanik and I am here tonight on behalf of the American Public Works Association or APWA to recognize Director of Public Works, John Edelbeck. John was recently honored by the APWA as one of the top 10 public works leaders of the year at their, at their annual international congress in Chicago. The top 10 leaders are exceptional public works professionals who have been selected by a committee of their peers from across the country for their career-long professionalism, expertise, service, and personal dedication to improving the quality of life in the communities they serve. You're all familiar with John. Certainly, he's been here a number of years and did a lot of work. And he's had a lot of great work in your community with it. Certainly, some of his innovative projects, like the Riverside Reflection Garden and Riverside Medical Center Hospital Stormwater Quality Project are outstanding examples of his unique project solutions. And who would've thought of that one and pull it off like that? It was extraordinary. But you might not be as familiar with the organization that is recognizing John and his achievements with it. The APWA serves professionals in all aspects of public works. It sets, it's set apart by that and makes it the effective voice of all public works professionals throughout North America. It represents over 28,000 public works professionals coming from local, county, state, and federal agencies, together with private sector vendors and consultants that serve them. It exists essentially to develop and support the people, the agencies, the organizations that plan, build, maintain, and improve our infrastructure in our communities. The top 10 award is that organization's premier recognition. It began in 1960 and recognizes individuals that personally personify excellence in serving the public interest through outstanding public works leadership and performance. The award is limited to just 10 professionals each year and is highly competitive. John's nomination was one of over 60 that were considered from public works professionals throughout all of North America. John's nomination was prepared by the Wisconsin Chapters Award Committee with strong support from Henry Velicker and several testimonials or letters of recommendation from John's peers and colleagues, both currently and from his past positions in Illinois. I understand one of them's a Bears fan, but we've printed a copy of the nomination and I believe Henry has it. It's available to view. It's pretty impressive. His collection of projects is experience prior to joining your staff here at the city of Wapaka and there's a lot of really cool stuff there. In reviewing the nomination documents, several strong characteristics consistently stand out. John has consistently demonstrated extraordinary innovation and passionate initiative in his projects. His sense of fairness and caring for the community, its residents, and business, together with his practical, common-sense approach to effectively solving problems are really his trademark. John, on behalf of the American Public Works Association, congratulations on your outstanding achievement serving the city of Wapaka and the public works industry. And we'd like to present him with the plaque that recognizes the award.
Now, everybody, you want to be sure. Want to make sure you did notice the mayor did hand me the mic, I didn't grab it from him, so. Okay, here we go. Well, I just want to say that, you know, with my career in public works, I've always had supportive mayors, supportive councils. I've gone through a lot of council, alderpersons in my career, and believe it or not, mostly pretty darn good. I give them a lot of credit. I've always respected their positions of running and being elected and representing, you know, their district and their city. And I've had some fantastic mayors, including the current mayor that we have right now, because I realize that all these crazy ideas and things that I'm interested in doing or things that I want to do, aren't going to go anywhere without council support. Same thing with the staff that I've worked with. Our staff here is phenomenal. Professionals in what they do and really care about the community. And that's one of the things that I think when you talk about a community or a city employee, they really need to be community-minded. It has to go beyond their eight-hour day job and really what's best with the community. And I've worked with some really great peers, staff, the employees that work for me in our public works department have been very supportive, very supportive. And that means the world in trying to make initiatives to help your community. And I say that my wife has been there beside me all this time and I told her I'd have, she told me I had to say that, so. That's okay. I come home and talk about curb and gutter, she comes home and asks me how that answer makes me feel. So I guess we kind of get, it kind of goes both ways, but, you know, a perfect example is the 2254 bypass, which was a national award winner. Our bypass project and the airport project and the interchange was a national, APWA national award winner in Angie, 1990, 2000, 2005. 2005 was our award-winning APWA. And the perfect example of that is all the agencies that had to be involved. APWA, or I'm sorry, DOT and DNR, Army Corps, almost every department is involved in some manner on that project. It goes back to Mary Lewinsky when I started 17 years ago. Tell me about this project and how important it is that we get this bypass and we've got this conflict with schoolchildren and buses and trucks. And, you know, you think about, that project goes back 25, 30, 35 years that that's been worked on by mayors and councils and staff and agencies for it to come to fruition. So that just gives you some complexity. Our staff, the contractors that actually built it, the consultants that design it, it takes all those people. So it really is fun to be involved in the public works profession. I guess lastly, I wanted to say, Wapaka really can be very proud of this award. The public works director, as an example, from Phoenix, won this award as well. And here is little old Wapaka as well, being recognized for this. I can tell you, in Chicago, I had five or six people come up to me after the award ceremony and said, "I know where Wapaka is. I've been to Wapaka. You know, we've gone up there since we were kids, this cabin on Long Lake, or I've been to Wapaka, I had a great time. Isn't there a bar called Harbor Bar?" I mean, so people know about us. It's a wonderful community and that's just a good example of that. Even in Chicago, at a public works conference, people coming up to me. So I think we can be very proud of Wapaka and proud of this award as well.
Yeah, that, everything was good until then, yeah. Okay, under public input, we do put on our agenda a spot for public input. This is for anybody that would like to speak on any non-agenda items that we have here. If you would like to, please step up to the podium, give your name for the record, and limit your time to five minutes or less. Thank you, John, or Jeff, sorry. Any public input? Okay, we'll move on then to department announcements and reports and, as always, Gene, we'll start with you.
Well, everything's moving on good. Starting to get some budgets back in. Report on that next month.
Great, sounds good. Peg, our library director.
Well, you know, Mayor Smith, we're celebrating 20 years on the square this year. So we're having an open house on Thursday night to celebrate those 20 years and look back and see all the accomplishments that we've made for our community. So I hope you'll join us. We're going to have a short presentation at 6:30 and it'll be interactive, so not too boring, I hope. And of course, this is the last week of our Common Ground exhibit. If you haven't visited, please make time to go in and see Common Ground, Native Cultures of Wisconsin. We have many of the tribes that are actually demonstrated right there. Our children's programs start up in October and don't forget that you can get your downloadable ebooks and audiobooks from the library. And I can help you do that, just make an appointment. And there's an app for that, too. So if you haven't seen the app with your iPad, you can certainly get it. Also, we have text messaging for holds. I don't know if people are aware of that, but you can actually get your message over your phone now, so we can help you get set up with that as well. Beautiful fall days are ahead. I hope you'll visit our beautiful Swan Park and walk the story walk. We have a new book there. And I'm working on budget 2014 and budget 2013 looks like it's on track. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Peg? Economic Development Director Brennan.
Good evening. First off, I returned from about a week-long seminar training last week in Madison towards my certification in economic development. So that's the second course of six that I need to take for that certification. It was a, it was more of a basic course. It kind of gave an overview of everything in economic development, from marketing and attraction to how to brand your community, to business retention and expansion. A little bit later this evening, we'll be unveiling a plan in relationship to that, but I also probably will be giving a more thorough report of those two classes and seminars at a future meeting coming along. Project updates for the city. Midwest Air Supply has actually submitted a site plan, will be on the October Plan Commission. The applicant does have everything in the house or in the office right now for review, so excited to see that project moving forward. Smith, boat lifts and docks, the area has been cleared for trees and you'll probably start seeing grading and development within the next couple of weeks out there. Currently, staff is working on some potential projects out in the East Gateway area, some additional projects, so hopefully some more to report on that within the next couple of months. Actually, while I was at my training in Madison, I met with the engineer for Bethany Holmes. There was a business after five meeting a while back and they had discussed looking to renovate some of their building and looking at their efficiencies and possible building expansion. So I met with the engineer while I was actually at my training and got some overview out there, did send some more information out there. Could see some more development out there in the next year or so. They are concentrating on their main campus right now. Couple of years ago, prior to me starting here, Henry actually had a tech project with East Central Wisconsin Regional Plan Commission for a housing study. I am falling back on that right now and it looks like that report will be done by the end of this year regarding the housing and population within the city of Wapaka. So we'll be looking at what we have, the current inventory that's out here, renting and all the other, the population densities and everything else. And will give us at least an insight moving forward on how to deal with some of the housing or population within the city. And I think that's it.
Okay, thanks Brennan. Okay, and we have Director of Public Works, John Edelbeck.
Okay, we've got hydrant flushing upcoming in the, within the city. It's an annual, annual work that we do around the community to clean out our system. We have street sweeping that's ongoing, crack filling, you might see some of that around town. Tree trimming, tree removal. We've got, recently see some pavement patching. We did the work downtown and we're repairing some other water pavement from water main repairs or water service leak repairs. Grass cutting's ongoing. We completed some manhole rehab work in the East Gate area this week. Sewer cleaning and we've got our large project at the wastewater treatment plant where we're rehabbing the digester. The steel cover has been removed by a crane and they're rehabbing that. And then we're doing work inside of the digester itself with putting a new mixing system. And we're cleaning the inside of the tank for, and recoating that. This is probably a once in 15 to, hopefully 15 to 20-year project, so it'll be a nice improvement for us. We're decanting the sludge storage tank to reduce the amount of sludge that we actually haul and we pay per gallon to land apply that sludge, which should be happening this fall. So there's a number of things going on at the treatment plant. Upcoming, we have some pavement striping that we're waiting on the county, Portage County to do for us on Bailey Street and Brainerd Road going out to Swan Park. And we've been busy this week with a number of other items that are on the agenda tonight, but as well, budget preparation for next year, focusing in on our proposed capital for our different divisions. That's all I have.
Thanks, John.
And I don't have it in front of me right now, Mayor, but I believe all of our accounts are within budget at this point.
Okay, great, thank you. Parks and Rec Director Aaron Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things to talk about today. We do have some new programs coming up. An adult painting class is beginning in, beginning of October here. And then we have a couple alternative exercise classes for adults that'll be starting up, meeting with that instructor next week. So excited to get those started. Fallarama is also coming up this Saturday. I'd encourage anyone to get out there. We've been planning and Terry and her staff have been a big help in this. It is a Friends of Wapaka Parks fundraiser, so all of that money will go to help our programming in our parks. We are looking at about 40 to 50 vendors right now at South Park Circle and it's looking like it's not going to rain, so we're excited about that. That will go from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday. We did get a recent donation from the Wapaka Youth Little League Board of $15,000 and we've done that work to put in drain tile on Field 1 and 2 at Swan Park. This summer, we had numerous tournaments out there where it seemed to rain every single weekend or three inches maybe a day or two before. And because of those two fields being on more of a clay substance, the other two fields are on more of a sand substance, those fields really had problems draining. And it became a safety issue for when we had all the, all of a sudden we'd have 32 teams coming into town. They come in because they love the facility, they want to play on those fields and we'd have to ship them off to the Wapaka Middle School field. And it's, it's not good for when you're, when you're, when you have a fundraiser like that, you want to keep all those people there, you're selling concession to them. A lot of people put in a lot of effort and time in planning and you want it to kind of go off as well as it can. So, end of the year meeting, we addressed this issue. They decided it'd be worth putting $15,000 towards installing drain tile in those fields and that's what we did. I also want to let you know, we did spend, I agreed to spend $5,000 of a Swan Park Improvement Fund. That's not taxpayers' money. It is all from, actually donations from them and organizations such as the Wapaka Foundry, youth softball and men's softball. So that, all the bills have not come in yet, but we are going to be definitely under the $20,000 that's allocated and I'm sure under $15,000. And we'll have a meeting to reconvene how to spend the rest of it. I also want to thank John's crews for help with that. We did offset some labor costs by, our Parks crew and John's street crew came and helped and got all that work done in about a week, so that was, that was great. We also have, going to not such a good thing here, we had a, we were forced to close the Augie Austin Gym, or at least half of it, by the stage in the rec center. We've had problems with bubbling in that if you, if you've ever been in there, you know that surface of that, of that gym. Humidity in the summer tends to get that court to heave. We had some new spots pop up. I took park board through there in our last park board meeting, so they could see it. And I would invite anyone else to come and see it as well, if you're interested. You know, we have seniors coming in, walking the perimeter to that gym every morning and if all of a sudden it gets to be 95 degrees like it did the end of August and it's humid and we got new spots popping up, I don't really feel comfortable having those tripping hazards out there. So we were first forced to close that. I met with a Kiefer representative who was the flooring manufacturer. They basically, well, basically we're looking at some different options right now and waiting to hear back from them, but just wanted to make you all aware of that. We also are beginning of the process of a needs assessment, which will be part of a five-year plan. It's kind of the first step in this five-year plan. We plan on meeting with about 25 to 30 groups in the community. We work with, this could be civic groups, it could be youth athletic groups, it could be community theater. These are groups that we either currently work with or that we feel like we could definitely benefit the community if we worked closer with. And that process will be a probably, I'm going to guess, a two to three-month process where we'll be meeting with all of these, these kind of community shareholders, getting their opinion on how our department can run better, what our strengths are, what our weaknesses are, and maybe how we can do things different. And I think that'll give us a great kind of pulse of what the community thinks of, you know, how we're doing and what we can do. So after that process, we will put that kind of into a five-year plan and that'll be done by our city staff as well as park board. And we are definitely excited to get that, get that going. I did also want to mention, well, I'm sure we'll get into South Park here later in the meeting, but if anyone has any questions about the previous mentioned topics, otherwise that's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Aaron. Thank you. Obviously, if you, council members, if you have questions, this is the time to ask them. Okay, Chief Goke.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. We did receive a $450 educational grant scholarship through EW Plaidfield Extended Learning Program, which will be sending an officer through the online program for first-line supervisory training. We do still have that current officer position that is vacant, unfilled. A conditional offer was given to the last applicant, got down to the end of the day and the candidate declined and the list, and the reasons listed in the, my memo there. Grant-wise, as I've stated before, we were about $8,000 behind on a grant that we received from DOT. They had some funding problems, so they pulled the funding from that grant, even though we've already expended those funds, including a partial equipment grant for $5,000. We did receive a check for about $2,400 that goes towards that grant obligation. We still have about $6,000 that is still out there and we don't know if that will be reimbursed. There was a little caveat at the end of that grant application that said those funds were, would only be available, or those, the distributions of those funds were contingent on availability of the funds and there is some problems with the federal money that came into the state through the sequestration and we're getting hit with that. So we're still hopeful that some of that money is going to be coming through, little bit at a time. So it's not written off yet. Like I said, we do expect about $6,000 to be paid back yet, but we're unsure in whether that will be paid. And the rest is informational.
Thanks, Chief. All right, and Henry, City Administrator, Clark.
Been doing a little preliminary work with Gene on the budget. We'll be hitting and kicking that up in October. Next meeting, the outside agencies will be presenting their budgets to the council. The taxi, I think I've reported in the past, we have to go out to procurement of our service every five years. It is on the street. The proposal- The proposals are due October seventh and then we'll get into the review. At this point, we're about sixty-seven percent through the year and I'm at right about sixty-two percent on my budget. And then the other thing we've spent some energy on is, you're going to see it under New Business, working with Brennan to try to devise a mechanism for the council to sit down, talk about economic development and get some clear goals set for that and some expectations of the work plan. So we're going to talk a little bit about that under New Business. We did meet with a number of people and got a lot of input and there was a lot of gyrations as we worked through some of the, some of the issues, but we did spend a lot of energy on that this past month, so that's it, thank you.
All right, thanks, Henry. Okay, moving on then, we have, under action items, we have license report number eleven eighty-six. This is a special Class B temporary license to sell fermented malt beverage and wine and the Wapaka Community Arts Board for their Phantom Art Gallery to be held on October tenth, two thousand and thirteen. That information is in your packet, I see two members are here, go ahead.
The Phantom Art Gallery is on the corner of Fulton and Main. It's Phantom because we will move if that business ever is not vacant any longer, that's why we call it Phantom Art Gallery. We are into our third year, four times a year we chain out, change out the exhibits and we have a, an evening, two-hour gathering where we meet the artists and encourage the public to come and see the new artists who are displaying their work. Usually about twenty or thirty people come. We won't be selling any alcohol, but we would like to have some wine and beer for that two-hour period of time.
Okay, and as you said, Anita, this is your third year that you've done that?
Yes.
No problems that we've had in the previous years, Chief, that you remember?
I'll make a motion, we approve license report number eleven eighty-six.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Shamble, second by Keeland, that we approve of license report number eleven eighty-six.
Thank you.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, next, we have recommendations on award of an engineering service agreement for two thousand and fourteen for the roadway, roadway rehabilitation program. John?
Okay, we went out and solicited seven consulting firms and we did receive seven proposals back. And there's a memo in your packet regarding this. We looked at five different criteria, firm qualifications, personnel qualifications, extent of the engineering services to be provided, proposed project, time schedule and cost breakdown. And in looking at the firms that we solicited, they're all good firms, firms that have done work either with us in the past or we're very familiar with. Personnel is qual, are qualified, service, the extent of services is very clearly laid out in the request for proposals and they, they identified that in their proposals. And the timetable is all, meets our expected timetable. So, I then identified the proposal cost breakdown. Some did submit ours, while others did not. And I have talked to Kasing and Associates. Kasing is a consulting firm based out of Milwaukee, but if you recall, a number of years ago, they opened up an office here in Wapaka. And we have done some work with them on a few different projects, they designed Bailey Street project, they designed and inspected the High Street project, a few other projects with us. We've utilized their surveying services a bit. And we've got a real positive experience with them. Their office is actually behind the Hardee's store on Hillcrest and their office is actually on the project, within the project limits of the, this project, so they were very interested in, in being competitive and as you can see, their dollar amount is very competitive with the other six consultants. I did talk to the president of the company and they're very excited to get this award and to bring forth a nice design project for us. This is for design engineering services and does not include construction inspection, which over the last, last year and, and previous years, we have taken on a lot of those roles, our staff has, and it's gone, gone very well. So, we would need tonight a motion to concur with our recommendation to contract with Kasing and Associates for the dollar amount not to exceed ninety-eight eighty-six sixteen for the engineering services for two thousand and fourteen street rehab program.
I'll make that motion, John.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we award Kasing and Associates an engineering service agreement for the two thousand and fourteen roadway rehabilitation project for an amount not to exceed, say that again, John?
Nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixteen cents.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Dave Shamble?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thanks, Sandy. And next, we have recommendations on award of construction contracts for the South Park project and, Henry, are you, yes, yeah, are you the lead?
Yeah, we're going to tag team this, Mayor. This probably deserves a little bit of time to go through because you're just seeing it today. I think we should start, if you go behind the memo where there's the bid tabulation, I think John was going to work us through this. And then I guess I'll pick up with, you know, the funding, match, you know, to cover the costs and then I think we'll be open for some questions, I'm sure.
Okay, I can start with the item that says bid tally and estimated totals. It is a little confusing and if you have questions, just interrupt me and I'll, I can answer them. We did put a number of different options, alternate bids and that for a couple different reasons. One, to see subsections what the actual cost might be and for the city to determine if it's something our crews would want to do, what the value is in the actual bid, so we could break it out. And we also put some other alternates in here specifically, that if we had money left over in the budget, that we could, we could add certain features that we thought were important. So, with that said, I'll kind of walk through. This is also broken up into bids A through M. And the reason we did that was to allow for some smaller contracts, specifically local contractors, to try to bid this work. If we bid this as a, as a single bid, lump site, lump sum bid, we would have a general contractor bid it and they would obviously get bids from a number of different firms and there would be no, really no opportunity for the locals to get the work unless they work with that general and the general selects them. So, that was our goal in mind, was to really provide a, an atmosphere or opportunity for some of our local bidders. With that said, the, the city's objective is going to be at, to act as the general contractor and to coordinate these sub packages. That will take a little bit of effort, manpower effort, but it's something with this project we think would be, will be able to handle, as we have done similar projects like this in the past. So, bid A is site work, this, there's a number of items in the site work, but it relates to earthwork and excavation and railings and a number of different things, again, related to that. Sidewalk and that is in that bid package and they're clearly described in the specifications. As you can see, we had three bidders, Advance was a low bidder, substantially lower than Faux's or Radke's. And we have talked to Advance and they, they are, you know, interested and satisfied with their bid and interested in getting awarded that. We then broke out storm sewer as an alternate. That was, again, something we thought our city staff might be able to work on and save some money for the project, so we wanted to get a dollar value for that, what actually the storm sewer cost would be. Here, if we were to award these alternates, we have to, we have to pick one contractor to do all of the, the bid A items. So you can't pick bid A, Advance, bid A, alternate bid one, Faux's, bid A, alternate bid two, Faux's, I mean, you can't pick and choose, you have to pick one firm through the whole way. But, again, we were only interested in, in a portion of these and we'll go through that. Bid alternate A two was patio area one, or I'm sorry, patio area A and that's shown on the sketch map or the, the project map, there's two patio areas. We were hoping that if there was money in the budget, that we could add patio area A. Alternate bid three was A and B. Again, these are lower stepped down, with stepped patio areas that were in the initial design. And alternate A, alternate bid four under A relates to some additional sidewalk that, again, if there was money in the budget, we'd be looking at running sidewalk further to the west. However, it's more likely that will be considered when we, hopefully in the next phase with parking lot work. Bid B was water, there's a two-inch water main and hydrant that is needed to be constructed as part of this project and Faux's was the low bidder. However, you'll see later that this is something that we're recommending that we reject that bid and that the city actually perform that work as well. Bid C, building concrete, this is work related to footings and the concrete right underneath the building itself. You can see Altman was the low bidder. Bid D is masonry, the building under the, the columns have masonry on them and then the bathroom and kitchen building has masonry. And Barron's was the low bidder there. Bid E, we did not receive any bids, that's gypsum board and painting, there's an estimate of twelve thousand dollars, that's, that's drywall and painting for the building and that's estimated at that dollar amount. Bid F is aluminum windows, five thousand dollars, that, we did not receive a bid on that. Bid G, rough carpentry doors, again, Altman is the bidder, hundred and twenty-five thousand. And bid G, alternate roof trusses and framing, the city was considering, and we set up the bid this way, that the city would actually take over, purchase the roof trusses and actually install the roof itself, physically the roof. You can see the deduct would have been twenty-seven thousand dollars to do that. We did do a pull-off and identified material costs and there was not that much savings for the city to actually do that work, so we're trying to put our efforts in some other areas. Again, Altman was the bidder there. Bid H, roofing flashing sheet metal, we were bidding a sheet metal roof, I had forty-five thousand dollars was the estimate, we did not receive a bid. And some of these items, we didn't receive bids on, you're not always, not always sure why, but this is a prevailing wage project and it is a substantial, being an architecturally designed building, for grant purposes, there are some hoops to jump through and we'll talk a little bit about how we get some of these services completed outside of this, but we estimated forty-five thousand, there was a deduct, it's estimated at twenty thousand if we were to put shingles on that roof instead of metal. Bid I, resinous flooring, this is just a epoxy flooring that it provides a nice permanent finish, we didn't receive a bid on that. Bid J, we received no bid on the signage, that's estimated at four thousand. Bid K was plumbing, you can see we had competitive bids on plumbing and Anger Breton was the low bidder here. Bid L, HBAC, that, all that is, is a ventilation system for the bathrooms, it's a mechanical ventilation system that operates with occupancy sensor, that's estimated eight thousand. And that, we didn't receive a bid on, and then Bauer Electric was the low bidder on the electrical. So to sum that up, four forty-one eighty-three is the base bid amount that we did receive on bids, those are the, the apparent low bidders, recommended low bidders. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but you'll see that the only difference with that is we are looking at not awarding the water main work and the city taking on those, taking on those services. Are there any questions? I know it's confusing, it's, I can answer any questions you might have on it, though.
John, I noticed that Advance Construction's bid A site work is about thirty-five, thirty-six thousand dollars less than Faux's, but doing the math in my head, I see that Faux's is about thirty-five thousand dollars less than all the other bid As.
Yeah, if you add it up, it's still, Advance is still cheaper.
It is, okay.
But we don't, we don't desire to award those other As, alternates. But yeah, if we were, you, you would add up the, all their A bids, compare Faux's to Altman or Advance and then you would consider a recommendation. Or you might pick and choose which ones you're interested in. But you'll, you'll see that with the base bid A, we're only interested in the base award. We're not recommending the other alternates be added to the base award.
Do you want to go over to the, oh, sorry, man? No, you're leading, I was going to lead, try and get John to go over to the back page of the memo there?
Oh, sure, on the, the stuff that the crews would do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure. I'll go through the, I can go through this briefly, but as far as city crew efforts, as you can see under project revenues, project expenses, you see there's a water utility account. We're estimating our material costs at about twelve or thirteen thousand for the water main and we might have to rent a backhoe or, or rent the services of a backhoe, so there's a couple thousand more, so we're estimating about sixteen thousand dollars and that's offsetting the bid that, that we're receiving now. We are using our city crews, so that is, that effort is there and is not shown, these are just material or contract expenses. Storm sewer, the same thing, we had a thirty, thirty-some thousand dollar bid on the storm sewer. Faux's was at thirty thousand, Advance was at thirty-eight, so if we use thirty thousand for the Faux's bid, we understand, we've talked to them about their material costs and we have some equipment costs that we may be contracting out. And again, we're estimating about sixteen thousand dollars in expense there. And that's, that, under this scenario, is proposed to come out, out of those accounts, storm sewer account and the water utility account. The last item is street sidewalk, there is some money shown out of the street account to help install sidewalks for this project. Last item is, you see under project expenses, roofing materials. We've looked at the roof and that is, once the contractor has the building to a point where it's sheeted and roofed and sheeted, we then can come in and, and install shingles and finish it off. That's something our crews can do, it's really good work for us, we can put two men at a time or six men at a time on it. We can use it as filler work for us as well, so we've estimated our material costs at about eighty-five hundred in that ballpark. So, really, those are the items that we're looking at from a city standpoint, performing that work.
Now, I think it is our intent that the sections that did not receive bids are still, you know, part of the project, so, and, but they're not critical to the start of the project. So, as the second page says, there is a, you know, it's our recommendation to go forward and get, according to our procurement policy, written quotes for that work. We also have reached out to Altman, who's doing the building and the masonry for the building, oh, no, excuse me, the building concrete, to see if they will give us a price for these additional items. Again, I, we don't know what those are yet and, you know, we probably still want to get pricing as well from our locals to see if we can place that work here. Aaron, you want to review the, the project budget, are we at that point?
Yeah, you want me to go through the project revenues, Henry?
Sure, if you want.
Okay. All right, as you guys can see on the top of the page there, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars is from that DNR grant, the donors are kicking in two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Parks operating account, we do have some money left from this year's budgeted amount in our operating budget and, you know, we didn't have a recreation from this year's budgeted amount in our operating budget. And, you know, we didn't have a recreation coordinator for most of the year, so that's where some of that's coming from. I also opt out of health insurance, and we have a couple thousand left from some parks' part-time wages from that line. So that's just kind of a brief explanation of, of what you're seeing there.
Excuse me, Aaron, that number, I think when you looked at projections out, was what, 35,000? You thought was the savings for the rest of the year?
Correct. Out of all those, those lines I just mentioned, that all totaled about $35,000 savings. So you can see that we have 12 in here out of the 35. The city parks fees, that is a fee that is basically charged to any new development. Am I correct, Henry?
Yes.
And that has been kind of collecting for, for years and hasn't been touched. We feel like this is a good project to apply that to. Also, the Development Department operating account, that would be what was budgeted for Brennan's position, and because of, I think he was hired a little later in the year, we do have some money left there. I believe that, that number was also 20,000. Am I correct, Brennan?
I believe that was more towards 30,000.
30,000.
Yeah, we projected it out, so we should, yeah, 30.
Okay, so that's, that's 12 of that. Friends of the Parks, we have $15,000 that the Friends of the Parks would, would spend towards this project through fundraising efforts. And then the water, storm, and street, you know, with all of that work has to be done within this park. And I, I will say this, though. The street sidewalk account, just so everyone is aware, you know, that is, a lot of this work would be done within the park, and that might mean that, that, you know, just grinding happens, and, and new sidewalk will not be poured throughout other parts of the city for this year. Also, then the Rick, Rick Johnson donation account, $15,000 of, if you guys remember, Rick has agreed to, to set aside $25,000. He's doing that $1,000 at a time, $1,000 per month for 25 months. You know, 15 months out, the project will be kind of, you know, that'll work out all right. We've been collecting for the last couple months here. And that, that money was basically set aside to use as we saw fit. And, and we feel comfortable with spending that 15,000 to make this budget work. So that's an explanation of, of where this money is, is coming from.
And John did touch on the, the base bids information, and you can see the project expenses. We do include a project contingency of 3%, and that's calculated on the building. So while it's shown in the building, it would be available for other pieces of the project, like the playground equipment. I know, I think the Friends, I think we felt like the Friends would be donating towards the playground. I think that sort of was their desires there. But if we needed a couple more thousand dollars to, to get the playground we wanted, you could take some of that contingency. We have an outdoor furniture allowance, and we do have a little money in for a flagpole and donor recognition. And all of you that have been to South Park, you know that's a sandhill right now. Nothing really grows very well. So we want to put in an irrigation system and get some grass growing. We have the engineering, and then we've spent some money on soil testing as part of the design of the project. So all in all, we're right at about $695,000, and we've identified the revenue sources to cover it. I don't know if people have any questions about that?
In light of Chief Goke's comments about not getting the, the funding that he was supposed to have gotten, the grant, how confident are we that the DNR grant is solid?
Well, I, I think it's, you know, we have a grant award, and I don't think there's any caveat that it can be pulled, but I could certainly follow up on that.
I just, yeah, I'd like to see if there's an asterisk, you know, any caveat there?
Maybe with your award, put a contingent on that issue, and we could go and check. I mean, I, I mean, it's a very critical piece of the funding.
Absolutely.
There is no doubt.
I can, maybe I can address that. We, in the years that I've been with the city, we've had one grant that we've had a problem with getting paid out on. And because of funding, we did, eventually did get that money, though. But that, yeah, that's a, that's a good question. But it hasn't been a problem in the past. But I think that's a good question that Henry could probably get answered.
Yeah, there, there's a couple things as we move forward that I, I need to clarify. Like, we're using, at this point, assuming the low bid can be our number for our in-kind services, as we showed in the grant, materials and labor. Or, you know, do they want us to, you know, fully detail that out, you know? If we can use the budget number, it's going to be a lot easier, the bid number. And there's a few other questions on, on the procurement piece. But yeah, we can definitely add that to the list of questions. It's important.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Just, I want to bring up, so that we all understand this, that going forward with this, remember that we had a project before, and, and it ended up well over, well over what we had budgeted for that or what, what they thought it was going to cost. They went back to the drawing board, and they came up with a number that was 654, right around $654,000. So when they actually went out to bid, they are now at 695,000 with some items that haven't even been bid out yet. Assuming that those numbers are fairly close to being accurate, we're going to end up about $41,000 above what MSA had projected this cost to be. And that's why you're seeing, as Aaron pointed out, that, and this is coming from staff, that they recommend they use some of the funds that, that are not being used in 2013. And he, he talked about those, the Parks Operation Account, and then the Development Department operating account. Those amounts, plus quite a bit, plus that, are going to be not used this year. So they would just go into the general fund, or at the end of the year, if not used, and, or we just wouldn't use as much reserves as we had planned on. The City Park, or, yeah, the City Park Fee Account, as Aaron said there too, just so we all understand, that's a non-lapsing account, so that money has been built up over the years. I think it's just in subdivisions.
Yes, sir.
We receive that.
Right, we get a couple hundred bucks per unit, I believe, when it's, it's developed. Yeah, I think some projects that were in the TIF, we, you know, traded out the fee if they would, you know, donate land to the River Ridge Trail, and there's some things. I don't suspect we'll have a lot of new subdivisions at this point, so that fund's probably not going to grow much. So let's see.
Okay, and then the, the other fund that, and now, all of these that I'm talking about are amounts that have been added since the last time we looked at this. So I think it's important that you, you know this. The last one is the street sidewalk account. And, and again, Aaron touched on this. So just so you understand, though, there is a certain amount of money that's set aside every year to do sidewalk projects throughout, throughout the city, where the owner of the property pays for half of the sidewalk, and then the city pays the other half. That, none of that, if we agree to do this, unless we put more money into the budget next year, none of that will happen next year. So we'll, we'll be putting off a year of, of doing some of the sidewalks that need to be done throughout the city. There is, there is no doubt that part of the South Park project, there is quite a long sidewalk that is coming in to there. So, I mean, this is a project that is actually sidewalk-related also, so. But again, I, I want you to understand that you're, you're looking at putting it all in one place instead of throughout parts of the city. Okay? Anybody have any questions? Any other questions on that?
Good question.
Sure, go, Gillian.
On some of these new ones that have been added, are these taxpayer dollars that are being added to meet our budget?
Yeah, in the, yes. In our grant application initially, we committed to $10,000 cash and right at 50,000 of labor and materials. And if you remember, that number started out at about 619,000. And if you remember, we were able to leverage another 30,000 of grant money, and the donors came forward with 30,000 more dollars from year three. If you remember, they committed 100,000 a year for five years. So we basically got an advance into the third year. So now we're looking at a project that's about 680,000. So again, the grant application showed $50,000 of labor and materials and 10,000 cash. So this is in addition to that.
So that, there are three accounts on there, Gillian, that are taxpayer dollars. There, there's the Parks Operating Account, the Development Direct Department operating account, and the Street Sidewalk Account. Oh, and the Storm Sewer, yeah. Yeah, does the Storm Sewer come from the sewer?
From the street.
From the street, okay. So there's actually four that are using taxpayer dollars for that.
I thought I had understood before that we had made it known to our residents that we wouldn't be using taxpayer dollars for the project. Is that not correct?
I don't know that that was the case, and I, I, I don't know that I ever said that because in the present, present, presentation of this project back in April 2012, presented $10,000 cash and 50,000 labor and materials. So that is taxpayer money. But if you look into the memo at the, at the very bottom, you know, we're leveraging for about 18%, about $125,000, we're leveraging, you know, 500, I don't want the numbers right in front of me, $569,000. So we're, we're basically funding 18% of a $695,000 project. And we were off from the grant application. I can tell you why that is, and it's my error. When I took off the cost estimate from the study that Rettler did, it was $619,000. And I didn't pick up an engineering cost to put on that, or I would have, and we would have got more grant money. When he did the cost estimate, he basically looked at all the phases, and it was about a one million, a million and a half dollars, and then a couple hundred thousand dollars in additional costs, professional fees, and, you know, all like that. And, you know, hindsight 2020, we, I would have put that in there, and we would have got that grant money. I mean, I, 339,000 versus, you know, what, 400,000, we probably would have got, if we rewarded the grant, we would have got that extra money. So that is one issue there that was overlooked.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Scott?
Just clarify again, John, there's a Storm Sewer account, or, or is this a sewer account?
Storm, it's Storm Sewer. In the, in the street fund, we have a subsection for Storm Sewer. Storm Sewer Works, Storm Sewer Repair. We use it on an ongoing basis every year, and that's in the general, Street Department General Fund.
It's not the, I just wanted to clarify, was the sewer utility?
No, no, that's sanitary. It's not sanitary.
Okay. Where are we going next, to award the bids?
Yes, sir. I think there's two actions we've got to do, and it would be motion to award the five or six bid packages in the front end of the memo. And then probably a second motion to reject the bid on the water package, because the city would do those, would do that project. I think those are the two official actions.
Okay, so if you look at the front page of the packet that was handed out to you, you have a bid package A, C, D, G, K, and M. We would be looking for a motion to approve those bids? Anybody?
I'll move to approve those bids.
Second.
We have a motion by Kealan, second by Olson, that we approve the bid package A, which is site work to advance construction out of Green Bay for $125,034.75. Bid package C, which is building concrete, concrete to Altman Construction, Wisconsin Rapids, for $49,800. Bid package D, which is masonry work to Barron's Contracting of Opaaca, for $69,032. We have bid package G, which is to rough carpentry, or to do the rough carpentry. This is Altman Construction. It's a $125,000 bid. We have bid package K, which is plumbing, which we would award to Anger Brethson Plumbing of Opaaca, an amount of $26,440.77. And bid package M, which is electrical work for Bauer of Electric of Opaaca also, and this amount is $22,100. Any discussion? I just have one comment, and, and I just want to pick up on what Gillian said, quite honestly. I think this is a great project that we're doing here. It came in overbid twice now, basically. We did get it reduced quite a bit from the last time. My recollections from the discussion that we had is that we were going to use in-kind monies to cover, not dollars, but in-kind work, to cover our share of this project. So voting on this tonight, you are changing what we have been talking about all along. We're actually using dollars, and some of it is tax dollars, that, that, and this is just my, this is what I believe that we've talked about all along. So again, as you vote on this, remember, and again, don't get me wrong, this is a good project. There's no doubt about it. Plus, we don't have a building there anymore either. So we, we need to do something. But we are changing what we had said we were going to do originally. Okay? Anybody else?
Mayor, may I, I, when I submitted the grant application, I did put in-kind materials and labor. So that, there was, at least in, in my mind, when I put that packet, that grant together, that there was going to be some budgeted materials. You know, we have our normal operating budget, so that's what my thinking was when I put that together, is we can spend our operating dollars that have been budgeted on this project to get, you know, to leverage as much grant as we could. I think that's what my thinking was when I put that grant together.
Okay.
I would just say, I'm pretty frugal, but you're talking about money that's on hand for these other items. And you are, you're getting $569,150 of a $695,150 project. So it isn't money that you're going to tax people for. It's money that's already on the project.
Partially true.
Well, it's already there, right?
Well, two of these items, we are using 2014 tax dollars.
Okay.
To do this with. Like I said, don't get me wrong, this is a good project, and we, we got great donations from our, from local people and industry to make this project work. It's been a difficult project, only in that we've had to go back and, and look at the project itself and change it a little bit. We have a DNR grant, which is, is money that we do pay for too, but it, it's, it comes from throughout the state. So again, it's a good project. I, I just think it's important that we understand that these are actual dollars that we're using now of our money. Besides, this doesn't even count, really, quite honestly, doesn't even count the amount of time that our staff is going to be doing to, to rough, I mean, that's just one of the items. The, and then the... the, and then the rejection one, two, where we do the, um, water project, too. Those, that's not even including that in there, what that cost might be. Okay? Anything else ready to vote?
I got a question.
Sure, go ahead.
What point do we get that grant in hand? Does that happen?
Well, we've received fifty percent of it. When you approved, accepting the grant, uh, they have a provision where you can get fifty percent of it. So we have half of it on hand. So half of three thirty-nine, you know, we got, yeah.
So when's the expectation for us?
Well, the other is you submit invoices and, and they'll pay, you know. But if you, if you, if you wanna react to Alan's comment, I think, you know, probably you wanna put the contingency on there, something that we can confirm a grant, and we can ask that question and make sure those dollars are, are there, yeah.
Could, I guess, have confirmation that that's a hundred percent guaranteed, or, or, I guess, yeah, we'd, we'd like it to be guaranteed. I don't know if there's any asterisks by it, question mark that we're gonna get it.
Should that be part of the motion, then?
I know, Mayor, you're, probably.
Who made the motion? I forgot.
I did, I made the motion.
So, do you wanna add that, Alan?
Yeah, we'll add that as, yes, add the contingency.
Okay. Who, who was the second?
I'm Olson.
Oh, the two that were talking, okay.
So what language do we wanna use, then?
I didn't hear the question.
What, what language do we wanna add in there?
Well, we've got to be confident that all of the money will come from the DNR, that all that has been pledged, okay? Do we put a, a plus or a minus? Pardon me, Dave?
You used the word comfortable. Comfortable, because probably there's not a hundred percent.
Well, do we wanna say minus ten percent, five percent? I don't know, how much are we willing to pony up if they don't come through? Or do we go after donors again? You know?
Well, but I think right now, wouldn't you just say something, you're, you're saying we'd go ahead and do this, Henry looks into this, he's comfortable, the language within the grant, that in our money will be forthcoming. Isn't that what we're talking about doing?
Yeah, well, I'd probably go farther than that, yeah, I would email the grant folks and, and have something in writing.
So if you get something and you're confident?
And I would wanna show it to the mayor, so he sees it too, I think he would need to look at it. Feel comfortable about it.
Have you crafted something, Sandy?
I'm writing like crazy here.
Okay, so, the idea with the second part of this motion then is, is that, um, we have to have some kind of insure, assurance that all of the money is coming. And that should be pretty easy to find out, just there.
Yep.
Whether there was an asterisk in there, like there was with the cheat.
Yeah.
Small print.
If I could just add, that's what they've told us. We have yet to find that language in our grant application. We're told that that is part of that process through the DOT DMV Division on that particular grant. And we've, you know, we've applied for dozens and, we, we've gotten dozens and dozens of these grants before. And it's just with everything that's going on financially in the nation, it's come down to roost on us. And we're not the only agency in the state. And I didn't mean to imply that, that it carries over onto every grant, but we were taken really by surprise on it.
And, yeah, it's a different department, too.
And it's really gonna question our, uh, the next time we look at these grants, we'll have to really think twice about it. Because this is not a comfortable place to be in, because we can't, we can't return equipment, and the overtime has been expended. So hopefully, it's just limited to our process.
Yeah, I don't wanna have to go to our taxpayers and tell them we need to go, we need to come up with another hundred and fifty thousand dollars because we didn't get the second half of this grant, or whatever that total is. So I don't wanna have to face that. So, yes, please, please do check into that.
Okay. All right, so that is part of the motion. And Henry, he'll send the council members an email or a memo or something like that. Okay. Anything else? Everybody ready to vote? Again, you're, you're voting, uh, if you vote aye here, you're voting in favor of those, uh, bid packages that we had listed before. Uh, Sandy, will you call the roll?
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Porczowski.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Gillian Peterson.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we have one more on this memo here. Uh, we need to reject the bid package from, bid package B, this is the water low bidder for, uh, Fox Brothers made this, uh, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars. And the only reason that we are rejecting this bid is because city, uh, workers are going to do this project.
Mayor, I did talk to, uh, an employee representative at Fox, and they're aware of, um, our situation here, and they understand it, and they would, um, obviously still want to be involved if we have any material purchases or anything of that nature for the project, so.
Okay, great.
I'll make a motion, we reject bid bet. Package B, water low bidder, Fox Brothers, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars.
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Kealan, that we reject bid package B. Any discussion? Sandy, will you call the roll?
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczowski.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Gillian Peterson. Steve Hackett.
Aye.
And Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, under new business, we have, uh, one appointment, I'll turn it over to our council president, Paul Mayo.
Okay, Mayor. The mayor appoints Bob Tronson to replace Carolene Bergen on the Opaaca Senior Center Advisory Board. This time, I need a motion to approve the mayor's appointment.
Salute.
Second. Move by Lockwood, second by Shamble, to approve the mayor's appointment of Bob Tronson to replace Carolene Bergen on the Opaaca Senior Center Advisory Board. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, no, motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, next, uh, this is under the discussion part of the meeting. Uh, Brennan and Henry are going to give us a, uh, a, an update on economic development and our city comprehensive plan. It's gonna take them a few minutes to set up, so let's set in, sit in recess here for about five minutes, but not much longer than the five minutes, and we'll get back at it. This is, uh, yeah.
Okay, you're on.
They're all set? This next part of the meeting is gonna be pretty informal, um, we are really not, this is just informational purposes. There are no motions to be made on this. So, uh, council members are going to be getting up and walking around to look at, uh, that beautiful drawing that Brennan has put together for us, so. Um, again, pretty informal, hopefully we can catch it on tape, uh, as we do that, um, I don't know, does it help to put the microphones up or anything?
We could use that.
Okay.
How about that?
Just because we are taping that. So, okay, let's turn it over to Henry and Brennan.
Yeah, as, as, as Mayor Smith.
Okay, um, I told, uh, knowing that we have a closed session, I told Brennan, we are gonna get through this in about ten to fifteen minutes max. And I know you, you guys, we have, uh, other important business.
We can reduce the size of it.
I'm gonna kinda set this up and then let Brennan, uh, carry us through it. Um, he's hired as our new development director and for, there we go, so it was the doubling. Um, and I'm sure council community has some, uh, expectations of his work. Um, we also have some things in the horizon we have to look at as well, is our comp plan update. And we've tried to come together, uh, a process that will knock off a lot of that stuff, but we wanna get focused on the economic development piece. Because you need to, um, be, uh, comfortable that we're working on, uh, projects and activities that you want us to. And that will, um, have been proven in other communities to be, you know, successful approaches to economic development. So I'll turn it over to Brennan to kinda show you what our thoughts are.
All right, thank you. Uh, looking at the overall process for economic development and just planning and development within the city, there's three components that I identified that are part of the entire process. One of them being more of a comprehensive plan, that's your twenty, thirty-year outlook. Um, a significant, significant piece of that is your economic development plan, and that's, uh, what you guys are sending me to training for right now and receiving my certification, economic development. So that's, uh, part of it is the strategic plan for that. And then there's also the community development, uh, process, which is our existing zoning ordinances, our sign code, design standards, and everything else. Uh, focusing mainly on economic development for a minute here, uh, there's gonna be a couple activities that's, that we're gonna break this down. And I wanna say that this is a different thought process, where we're hoping to get a lot of citizen engagement through this entire process. So as I kinda make you through the flow chart, and Henry was correct, I have gone through a lot of iterations with this, so that's why it's still in draft form. It could change after tonight. Uh, but starting at the council level, the first thing we wanna do is actually have a couple different workshops with you guys. One of them identifying, uh, neighborhood districts. We don't have neighborhoods within the city. And in order to get citizens more engaged, we need to break the city down to a more minute level. Most, most master plans are usually about a thirty thousand planning perspective. We wanna get down to the actual neighborhood development. And this is gonna be significant when we do embark on the downtown plans. That's where we first started, the whole idea of actually breaking the city down into individual neighborhoods. There's a couple other commercial economic engines within the city, East Gateway, Fulton Street. So we actually wanna go through an exercise with you guys and actually, uh, the citizens as well, and actually identify what the neighborhoods are. Uh, because that'll actually assist in the later process where we actually go into the individual neighborhoods, have neighborhood meetings with staff, and hopefully some of the aldermen, aldermen that actually are within those districts, and actually identify stakeholders that wanted, want to assist on the overall, overall comprehensive plan update that we need to go through. The other workshop that we wanna kinda have with the city council, which is gonna be more geared towards the economic development, is actually looking at, at the existing, um, trends that are within the community right now. Um, we're looking to bring in actually, uh, David Thiel for Opaaca Economic Development Corporation, along with East Central, to actually have kind of a, um, another meeting, another workshop per se. You guys did go through the economic training with WEDA last week. This is gonna be kind of a follow-up, more of a focused approach. Uh, last week's meeting was more of a global, we wanna really focus in on what are the existing issues and trends that we have. Your, your master plan's from two thousand and seven, we need to take a look at how that's gonna move forward. From there, um, a master plan is broken into nine different components, we're only gonna focus on about six of them right now. And that's where the city council's really gonna take more of the broad perspective and the initial start on this. And you can see underneath, underneath here, you have goals and objectives. Uh, the number one focus, which is gonna be economic development, um, then you have population and housing, utilities and facilities, agriculture, natural lands, land use and transportation, those are six components. What we are looking at from the initial start of that is to have the city identify new goals, um, new realistic ones, hopefully, and also some long-term ones as well. Uh, the plan that was done in two thousand and seven, um, although you guys did go through that process, uh, needs some updating on those existing goals, whether or not we've actually achieved some of them. Uh, so we're gonna actually hopefully do this in a, roughly a month-by-month process, or two months, depending how long it takes for each of these goals. But that's gonna be a city-initiated, a city council level. You guys are gonna identify all the goals for each of those sections, weaving in the economic development strategies and implementations that you need for each of those areas. Uh, from there, uh, previously I talked, talked about the neighborhood districts, we will actually start getting into, um, doing some neighborhood plans from, once the goals are identified for these six sections, we will start breaking down and going to the individual neighborhoods. Uh, by doing that, uh, we'll, we'll start doing neighborhood plans, pretty much beginning with the downtown, which will start next year. Uh, that was where we'll get the citizen engagement, identifying not only the individual goals, objectives, and action strategies for each of those neighborhoods, but making sure that they do relate back to the overall goals that the city council sets as a whole. Um, so that process, again, I understand that this is not gonna happen overnight. Uh, the strategic plan that we're gonna work on, uh, that you can see through the middle here, issues and opportunities, action strategies, that'll be the bulk of the work that's probably gonna happen next year. We will start this process with the downtown plan next year as well. But the strategic plan for economic development, understand that it also includes issues such as, you know, looking at our TID policies and our TIP policies, how do we, and we don't have anything right now, so how do we identify measurable marks that, you know, developers come in and looking for funding from the city? How do we identify whether or not they actually deserve the funding? Also, from there, it will be other ideas such as, um, establishing a business retention and expansion program, which we don't have here right now. Some of these things that I've learned within the last couple of weeks need, ultimately need to foster the existing economic development that's currently in the city. Um, so we're looking to identify a way that we can start having meetings with businesses, identifying issues. And it was actually, uh, just a side note, uh, we had a speaker from Dubuque, Iowa, and he talked about, he goes to over two hundred and seventy businesses a year and goes and talks to each one of them. Um, and it could be anywhere from an issue of the five-dollar meter, or five-dollar, or five-minute parking, to all the way to, you know, the taxes are too high, or the development standards are too tough. So we want to engage all the business owners in here on what the, what all their issues are, from the most minute all the way up to the most extreme. So those will be parts of the strategic plan that we're gonna go through. Um, I have other notes that I can follow up on this strategy and provide to you guys as we go through. Um, the other part of it, which is community development, there's some internal, uh, initiatives that we need to take care of. Um, identifying some policies and standards, uh, for zoning. Uh, the big issue that I see from an internal perspective right now is our zoning code is out of date, or there's a lot of conflicts between the two. Um, I've worked with some developers already, and, uh, some of the members that serve on the planning commission have noticed, I have to juggle about two to three different, uh, sets of standards sometimes, and it's, and it's very difficult. So we need to streamline our process and streamline our code, uh, so that when we do get development into the city, it's a streamlined process that they understand exactly from day one what we're looking for. When I was hired and went through the interview process with Henry and the mayor, um, there was a discussion about having more of a, uh, a different type of zoning code, that's more of a pictorial type of, uh, initiative, that's what we're gonna go for. Also, there's design standards that, that would need to be addressed and sign code. And then ultimately, at the end of the day, which is more of a holistic, uh, a goal, that'll come back to the action strategies, is our, uh, one of our big things is our website and social media presence. Right now, our website, uh, does not achieve exactly what we need for businesses that are looking to locate within our community. So that'll be an action item later on that we need to address. But, um, understand that I'm, I'm only one person, and I know Henry's gonna be helping on some of this as well, but we will be looking to utilize some outside consultants on this work as well. Uh, we'll be utilizing, uh, Opaaca County Economic Development, East Central, and possibly some other outside consultants to focus on this project as well. But this is kind of the roadmap they're looking at, I will digitize this, so you guys actually have more of a clearer picture of this. But wanted to get at least this, um, started this evening, the discussion, um, on where we're looking to go for the next couple of years here.
Uh, one impression that we don't want to leave with you is that, first, you know, this is about a two-year process, you know? We don't wanna leave the impression with you that we gotta go through this process before we start doing economic development stuff. I mean, you're gonna talk about it right out of the gate, and we can get going on business retention. We can get going on getting all our commercial properties up on the state website, you know, locate Wisconsin, and do a lot of this, uh, work that we, we just need to do in economic development. You're gonna be focusing on, you know, more policy stuff, and that's where council needs to be, you know, broad policies and objectives, or goals and objectives. Um, the other thing, there is a, a commitment on your part. Um, we envision the first Tuesday of each month would be when we focus on this. And I did ask the mayor's opinion on this, and I, I'm not sure that you gave me one, Mayor, or you maybe were wondering or thinking about it. But do we do it in the context of the council meeting? Or do we come and have like a workshop and start at five-thirty, or, or five o'clock? Or, you know, and do it, uh, on the front end? Now, our council meetings on, on the first, uh, Tuesday of the month can be a little bit slimmer. So we could do it within the context of the council meeting, the thirty minutes. But it's probably, depending on the topic, it, it's, it could take you two months to get through the economic development piece. So it is gonna require, uh, some work on your part and time to kinda get there and get those goals established for. And the thing we found when we looked at this is a lot of things tie back to economic development, like transportation, you wouldn't, obviously, good roads. But our, our taxi service, uh, is, is something, and I've been working with the mayor. But our taxi service is something, and I've been working with the mayor on the tourism panel. And there's some suggestions of maybe trying to revive the, yeah, the streetcar. Not the actual streetcar, but that whole idea of being able to run out to the chain. And we, you know, I think there's grant dollars available to do that, transit dollars. And I think the private sector could be a partner in making that happen. And it's probably a summer. It's probably a summer activity. But all these items can relate back to economic development. Housing. Every topic that you're going to be talking about will have an economic development piece. So please don't think that, you know, we're going to talk about economic development first two months, and then there's really no more economic development that you have to deal with.
I would concur on that one. Again, part of your strategic plan, which will be almost a separate document of this, of the overall master plan, does identify, and I think the breakdown of how we're going to do that strategic plan, which will, I'll get an outline to you guys within the next couple of weeks here, will identify. And you'll see that the goals that you got, the global goals and the citywide goals that you guys set up, well, again, I agree, will come back to overall economic development. That'll be the main focus for this entire thing. I mentioned earlier during my meeting, say that, and I'll provide an update to you guys, what my training, my two seminars so far. And I'll have an outline to you guys, kind of, of the strategic plan that we'll be looking at for probably about the next six months or so.
I think that's one question, Mayor, is how do we want to do this? And how does council want to pursue this? Do we do it because we know you meet twice a month? I think that's what our thought was, is catch you on that first Tuesday. I mean, I'm not sure what your level of interest is for having a separate meeting on this. Second Tuesday, you know?
If it's a workshop thing, just discussing things and going through it, it makes sense that it's a separate meeting. We get down to more detail when we start voting on it, obviously. Part of the council. Now, should it be before or after is a big question. I don't think I can meet anytime before. It's hard for me to be here at 6 o'clock. So we try, maybe 5:30 would be okay. Or do we do it afterwards, and then that gives us unlimited amount? What is the expectation of council? What do you want from council?
Initially, the council is going to be identif... The six sections, you guys need to come up with. Those six sections, six sections are going to have goals that are going to be orientated, global goals for the city. So that when we actually go down and break down to the individual neighborhoods, the neighborhood groups, neighborhood meetings, will actually focus on making sure that their neighborhood plans that they come up with, and then some of the strategies and action items that they need to take care of meet the goals that you guys set as a citywide, as the policy. So again, these, and I can send some examples out. You know, we, Henry and I were talking a little bit about how we're going to actually structure that a little bit. And the information, that's why we're going to have more of a workshop first with a couple other individuals to kind of identify and break down all the issues and current trends that are within the city to get a better understanding of that, before we dive into exactly developing new goals for the city that, again, are more of the policy base for the entire master plan and economic development strategic plan.
I need to see some examples, because I think you've said twice what we're going to do, and I still don't understand. Well, I think the other, you might have a good point, but the other side of the coin is that we need, as council members, to tell staff what our expectations are of them. So, I mean, it goes both ways, right?
And that's exactly, Mayor, thank you for bringing up that point, why we want to have this almost secondary meeting to your initial training you guys had with David Thiel and a couple other representatives, so we can iron out everything. And I think that's exactly one of the key points that I wanted out of that meeting. What direction do you guys want us to go at the end of the day? You know, this is a framework and map that we're kind of going to be basing off of. But, you know, specifically, I need to know what you guys are looking for, so that, you know, either this has to be tweaked, or, you know, this is, the flow chart and the framework is okay. But what areas do I need to, you know, specifically focus on? I agree with that.
Remember the slide with the dashboard? At like five or six, I'm not sure which county. Tracking. We need to come up with measures that we can track and keep that going. And so you can look at that every month and understand, you know, where we're at with our efforts. But, yeah, you know, we're always going to react to developers coming in. They know they want to be here, and we're going to deal with them. But, you know, heard that a lot of new business, jobs are created by your current business. You've got to do a better job. So those activities can come, but you need to focus on some bigger things. I think the TIF policies are important. Know how we fund them and, you know, and kind of rethink, you know, work all that and look at that. That's one. David, how we do that? Now, Brennan mentioned consultants, and don't get too taken aback by that, because what we're suggesting is like with East Central, technical service grants, they can come in and help us with pieces of this. I think, you know, we're going to have some cost, but it's not a big number. And Brennan, we try to deal with that a little bit.
I just want to make sure we don't have farm over subsets here. I mean, this looks like a lot of farm. And we are Wapaka, which isn't exactly metropolitan Minneapolis. So I hate to see a million hours spent on, I mean, how many developers and whatnot you talk to every month? I mean, I'm just saying, you could spend a million hours putting together flow charts. And I guess I'll need some convincing of that.
Well, one real project that you have to do is have this comp plan, it's in O7. Kind of, we get through all this, it's, you know, it's going to be... A lot of that can just be reviewing, and maybe you just just reaffirm work that we did before. But we need to kind of go through that, let you look at it. It's a different group of people, different council. You might have different priorities.
I'm like getting the neighborhood people.
No, we would go out to them.
I was going to say, the only time I've seen a bunch of people show up there was the old sidewalk.
Well, see, that, when they're getting anybody's ground down here.
Tell them it's a sidewalk. The goose roundup was a good thing.
Yeah, you're right, the goose roundup was the other one.
But see, the problem we had, and I think that was one thing that Brennan mentioned, is it kind of caught my interest, was we did this process, started in '05, I think, Mayor, or maybe '04, and we just took the city as a whole.
Henry, this is a long 10 minutes.
We were dropping lights wise.
This is a long 10 minutes.
That works, right? Okay.
It's twice 10 now.
So we think we can get better participation if we go to the neighborhood. And now Alderman, that neighborhood, once it's defined by the council, all our neighborhoods, and you represent that, if you participate, then you have an insight of what people are thinking. I think we're going to get more interest this way. Because we have the meetings out in the neighborhood.
Unless you have, unless you have something to pate versus, I think getting people any kind of city meetings is a real bad. I don't know, are the neighborhoods already named by the subdivision?
Well, yeah, that's what you got to decide. We have an idea, but maybe there's a different idea. And when we first did this exercise, we had done by like 12 or 14 distinct areas. That's too many. But, you know. You wouldn't think of Wapaka having 14 distinct neighborhoods, but it's not that hard to get to that point. But we're very cautious, Dave, of what comments, you know. You guys want, you want, you want resolved. You want resolved. I get it. I get it. I get it. We get that. So we're done. Where are we, about 15 minutes, John?
25. That's the line, right?
25. Oh. Down five now. Down five for you. Yeah, I touched down for it. Good luck.
Okay, we have... Under unfinished business, we are still discussing the public works facility. And we are in negotiations there, so I would ask that we convene into closed session to discuss that.
I move that we convene into closed session.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Hagan, that we convene into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute, Section 19.85, parent one, parent E, as it relates to deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property for a proposed public works facility.
Mayor Smith, I have a question. Since it's actually my listing we're talking about, do you want me in here, or do you want me to go?
I think that's a good question of yourself, but if you want that opinion, you should probably ask our city attorney.
I think I have it, John. Thank you.
Should I stay, or should I go?
Yeah, you might as well stay, but I don't know that you should contribute much.
We're actually talking about two properties, John, so... Or, I'm sorry. Okay, we have not taken a roll on going into closed session, although the doors are all shut. Sandy, please take roll.
Dave Shamble. Close session.
Aye.
Aye. Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson. Eric Olson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
And John Lockwood.
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.